Is that usually fairly interesting?
It is.
Is it?
Yeah, it actually is. And I think it's quarterly. It doesn't... It's not every month.
Hi!
We're starting.
Are you okay?
No.
Do you want to look at an hour ago?
What?
She can't get signed down.
Thank you.
She's locked right out of her station.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first order of business is nomination and resolution for president of the board. And I make the motion to nominate Kathleen Clyde for president.
I will second that. I have a question before we vote. You know, the president of the board is a position that, you know, you need to come to work to and you need to be accessible for. And I'm just asking Ms. Clyde if she is going to do a better job than last year. We had several incidents that we could not get ahold of you that were very important. And we just frequently had one on December 23rd. Our last day of business for the calendar year was the 20th. And we were made aware that there was a potential for an additional special meeting to be called before then and the end of the year. On Monday, the 23rd, Todd Bragg emailed us because Vicki was out of town, 10:15, to schedule a meeting, and the dates were the 26th, 27th, or the 30th. I was not available the 31st. And unfortunately, we did not hear back from you until, like, towards the end of the day. I think it was on Thursday, which made it very difficult for us to advertise. And it caused a lot of stress on our board, induced panic that we weren't going to be able to have a special meeting. And I just asked Ms. Clyde, is she going to make herself more available and more accessible as the board president than she has in the past year?
I am looking forward to this opportunity. I will certainly continue to make myself available. I do not... I remember the occasion of Christmas week. And I think that we were able to have the meeting and it went off without a hitch. I'm sorry if that induced panic in some way. But I'm glad we were able to do it. And I continue to look forward to carrying on the business of the board.
And are you gonna start putting, having like your cellphone number available for people? Because I've had people ask me for your cellphone, and I don't know if I'm supposed to give it out or not, because, you know, you don't put it on your cards. You just put your direct line, or actually, you don't even put your direct line. You put our commissioner, board commissioners' line. So can you address how you would like us to handle that?
Sure. You can use the phone number that I put on my card. You can use... I mean, the staff can get ahold of me. I don't want to make my cellphone that's private publicly available.
Okay.
You, of course, aren't allowed to use my cellphone. Rather you not give it out.
Oh, well, that's why I'm asking. Well, that's why I'm asking, because I've had so many on us, like, well, the only one I know that you give out is the board commissioners' one. So I just want to clarify that.
Right. Or you may use my cellphone. And if you have somebody that would like it, if you could ask me before you give it out, I'd appreciate that. And I would do the same.
Yeah. Well, mine's out there, so it doesn't matter, but... Okay. All right.
Role calling.
Vicki?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Sabrina?
No.
So with that, I will move to nominate Vicki Klein as vice chair.
I'll have a second.
I have a question to Ms. Klein. Ms. Klein, as the acting president for the board over the last four years, you know how important it is that we at least have two commissioners here at all times, especially during the busy time of the year when the county per se is open for business? Is that not correct?
I've not heard that, because even in your statements, you say you can't do the county's business behind a desk, so I'm in here, let me...
No. I'm talking about the week that you and Ms. Clyde both took off on vacation in the middle of August that left the county unable to do business, because both of you were not only on vacation, but were out of state. Do you recall that?
Yes, I do recall being on vacation in August. And I think I gave the board notice that I wouldn't be on vacation. So it wasn't like I just up and left.
Well, for some...
That was planned for two months.
For some reason, though, it did not get out to... I guess in the future, if you both decide to take a vacation on the same week, we might want to send it out to all the elected officials and stuff, because, again, it caused a hardship, because people did not realize that two commissioners... And I guess it's unprecedented, because I said, well, hasn't it been done in the past? I mean, it's one thing at the end of the year when we're closed for business and both of you are not around, or all of us are not around. You know, I'm always accessible irregardless. But my point to this was it was in the middle.
Excuse me, I'm always accessible too. My phone number's out there somewhere. You go out of state sometimes, and that's fine.
Well, I'm not saying you're not allowed. The question is...
Well, I'm always accessible. When I'm on vacation, you and I get calls, I get emails, and I answer them.
But you can't come and conduct business if both you and Ms. Clyde are out of state and off at the same time.
Well, I don't report to you, but I will, you know...
Well, I understand that, but I just want to be...
Role call, role call, Amy.
Well, I just... No, don't interrupt me, Ms. Clyde. You're not president yet. I know you think you are. But anyways, my point to this is...
I am president, so it's role call.
So I don't care. My point to this is you guys need to be considerate.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sabrina?
No.
Okay. So now I'll move to the resolution to appoint the clerk.
I'll make a motion that Amy is our clerk.
I will second. Role calling me.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes. And I'll make a motion to appoint Julie Gonzalez as acting clerk.
And I will second.
Role calling me.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Okay. For the resolution for setting special meetings, we had talked... I talked to Chris about instead of setting every Tuesday... We do... Sorry, I have mine out of order. I don't have this one.
If the board wants to suspend, if you said if you want to consider referencing Thursdays as a regular session in 2020, modify the language that if you put Tuesdays in there, Tuesday meeting is required, then the board will provide notice as it does for a special meeting.
If I could interject, we spoke last week, and alternatively, and I... I'm sorry to bombard you with emails early this morning, but I drafted separate resolutions where if you wanted to have, like, every Thursday, like you always do, then like maybe either the first Tuesday every month, or the second Tuesday every month, or the third Tuesday every month, or the fourth Tuesday. So I sent you four separate resolutions. I don't know. You do need to do fifty regular sessions. If you go with just the Thursdays...
You're not going to meet...
You're not going to do it. But if you want to have a Tuesday every month, I don't know which one is best, because you want to have a regular one, so whether the first one, or the second, or the third. So I did the four resolutions, and you just pick one.
I haven't seen one yet.
Oh, okay. I sent them just like about ten minutes ago, so...
Well, maybe we could hold which Tu... It seems like the fourth Tuesday would make sense, because I feel like the middle Tuesdays can get confusing, which is which. And we've already passed.
So the last Tuesday...
They're just saying the first Tuesday? The first Tuesday?
Oh, I thought you said the last.
Yeah, I think we should do the fourth.
Well, I would make the last Tuesday, because if there's a fifth Tuesday, I mean...
Or we could do the... Why don't we do the third Tuesday? Would that make it...
I think it'd be easier to do the last Tuesday. The final Tuesday of the month?
Just put the last.
Instead of...
The last Tuesday of the month.
Instead of first, second, third, or fourth?
Sure.
Do you think that works?
Ah, boy, just to keep it... And that's a good idea. But maybe it would be better just to do fourth, just way that's regular. I know people would have to count.
Okay.
Just do fourth.
That's fine. It doesn't matter to me, Chris.
Yes, I mean, it's more of semantics than anything else.
Sure, that's fine.
So do we want to hold on a minute? We'll run and print that resolution, so we have that? Okay.
Can Julie get it?
Yes.
I'll have her print off here, because I sent it down.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're gonna meet every Thursday and then the fourth Tuesday?
And then we could at some point suspend those if we... Don't leave them, or yeah, our count is good.
What'd you say?
They're working on it.
Oh, okay.
Can I ask on the resolution for board appointments, is this just a kind of a helpful document, but not an official one?
Right.
Okay.
Right, that's what we had, like, to...
Just the helpful contact information?
Yes.
Okay. So just a couple... Yeah, there's on... On this big one, on the AMATS Policy Committee, the alternates are switched. So Frank is my alternate. That's just a little typo.
Why don't we have a move money non-retirement thing in our packet for Angela Mudd?
Oh, jeez, that's mine.
How can they get in my office?
I have no idea. Oh, well, I put that on your chair, because Amy gave it to me to give to you.
Oh, because it was with this?
Well, that's what I gave to you on that other sheet.
And then...
Does Amy give it to you?
The direction home, area wide, the aging, that is not on the official resolution.
Is there a mistake on here, or is that what you're saying?
Yeah, well, first, there was just a little typo where Frank and Mike's names are reversed under AMATS. But then number 12 on this large sheet, almost as long as the representative, but she's not on this official resolution. I don't know if that is of consequence, but...
Oh, that's interesting. You know, that wasn't on the other sheet like that, because Frank was your alternate.
Exactly. It's only on this. Yeah, it's good over here. Then on the investment advisory, Sabrina is not on that.
She's an alternate.
I'm an alternate.
Okay.
So that's...
Yeah, so maybe this one's not good.
Well, it's like a backup document. Those are the only things I know that's... But it's fine.
I just looked at this one, because this one is the same thing. It was easier for me to...
Now, what was wrong with Melissa Long? She's not on here?
She's not on the resolution. She's on the large spreadsheet that I think is just for our reference.
She's not on the resolution inside?
Correct. It's after data processing board. It could be a printing issue, because it's a line break.
We can add a different one.
Yeah, it's not a big deal. I'll just point that out.
Where did we get... Because I... It's on this one, the amended. It's on... We have two copies of it. It's on here and it's on here. Do you have this one?
No.
Same thing.
It might be the same as this, right?
You know what? It is, but it is on here this time. Probably a printing.
It's really only that. So is that the resolution for the fourth Tuesday?
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
So I'll make a motion for the purposes of setting regular and special meetings and establishing rules for the meetings of the Board of Port County Commissioners.
I'll second.
Role calling me. Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Thank you for doing that, Chris. I'll move to authorize the purchase of refreshments for the Board of Commissioners' functions from January 2nd, 2020 through December 31st, 2020.
I'll second.
Role calling me.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
And then, and I'll make a motion in accordance with Ohio Advice Code, Section 109.43 and Section 149.43, appointing the commissioners clerk as a designated to attend training, programs, and seminars about Ohio's public record law on behalf of the Board of Commissioners.
I will second.
Role calling me.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
All right. You have some questions, Amy? Do we need to do the resolution on our... On the appointment, or can we wait until next meeting? Do we need to do it at the organizational meeting?
Are you ready to proceed on that?
We are, except there's one name left off. We can just amend and add it to it. Okay. So the amendment is adding Melissa Long as our representative to the direction home area and co-advocacy, AKA the area advisory council on aging. I think there's a few typos in that title, so let's make sure we fix that and we add it. So I'll make a motion to approve the amended list of 2020 board appointments.
I don't have that, do you?
It's not on here.
No, we have to discuss them. That's 19. This is not...
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought this was the...
No, this is... We have to go through, because like now you're the president, so you will be the board of revision. We have to go through it, all of them.
Okay.
Are we going in order of the agenda?
We can answer those questions first. So Amy, do you want to... You had a question about does the HR department... Or do you want to start with your question about the font?
Yeah. Every year we change the minute font, but the...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You had this agenda first. So do you want us to look at that?
Oh, yeah, sure. That's a draft.
Of what the agenda's will look like?
D1?
I think this makes sense.
Yeah.
And you just wouldn't have things on here if they didn't have something.
Right.
Yeah.
And you can add or delete.
Yeah, I think this looks good.
And then you had on here, Amy, discontinued use of consent agenda revised commissioners' agenda. Were you just restating that? Or were you asking?
Well, both.
Do you want us to review this format?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sending one instead of consent.
Okay.
So your next issue is the font.
Yeah, every year we change the minute font, but this year, the question came up of should the directors be using a certain font on their letterhead that's going out?
Have we ever told them before what to use?
I recall.
Not... Why would we sell out? I mean, I don't know.
It's been silly. I was thinking that it made sense not to change the font every year, so that it's just easier for people when they're sending in their resolutions and their journal entries, but it's not...
I didn't realize we changed the font every year.
I've never heard of that.
Did we talk about that ever?
Maybe back in the day, but it's always changed.
Okay. Well, I don't think we talked about it, though.
No.
And we definitely never set precedence for the director's fonts.
That's what came up this year, so...
Where? Here?
One of your department directors wondered if that's what they need to send out for their correspondence and things. So I just want to clarify.
Type, I mean, it's flexible. So I would say not to change it unless... I just, I don't think it needs to change. It's probably easier to keep it the way it is.
Yeah, I'm surprised that... I've never noticed that we change fonts. Would keep it consistent.
All right, let's move on from fonts. So you have questions about departments coming in under our process of people coming in for their resolutions?
It was more for the journal entries. Right now, your HR department presents the journal entries for hires and fires, but my question is, would you want Michael Steiner to come in and present his portion, or does HR present all of them?
You know, for the hires and fires, isn't the director always in here to talk to us about it? We don't just go by journal entry on that, is that correct?
No, no. Because sometimes if Kelly Doe doesn't always come in...
Oh, right, right. You're right. But there's so much... But I mean, like with Bill, I don't think we've ever just...
Well, Bill normally is here, so...
Like with Jean. Jean sends this through JNE.
Oh, I see.
But he wondered if he needed to come before you present him as opposed to coming through HR?
I don't think so. I mean, just to make him come in? I mean, unless there's a question, I don't see why he would have to come in.
Right, unless there's something that he wants us to be aware of.
Yeah.
Okay, so they can still come through HR?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, because typically, when it's like a question, where it's a new position or a promotion, they talk to us about it first, and then it comes...
Right.
The next week, or the hire happens down the road.
Right.
So I think that would be okay. I do not think that these different departments need to come in on the grant documents. I think it's okay for the Department of Budget and Finance to come sign grant documents.
Right.
The last one was like routine business for Kelly Doe's donations and to Todd Horton. Do you want to see them over here?
I think for the ones that you have listed, no. But I wouldn't expand that list without checking with us first. I think, yeah.
And you know, the directors are really good, that if there is something they feel that they need to discuss with us, let us understand, they come in.
Is that it? We had a... There's one issue that's not on here that I was talking to Amy about with our scheduling of our meetings. And I know in the past, we've discussed the email traffic and how on Outlook, our meetings are scheduled as separate, short appointments that move around a lot and that trigger emails for each appointment and any time it's moved. So one idea I had talked to Amy about was instead of scheduling it as each individual appointment, which will be more of those now under this way of doing the agenda, that we schedule on the calendar as 9 to 11:15 Board of Commissioner meeting. And then Amy would notify people when the agenda is set of what their times are. And they would generally keep...
The same time.
Yeah. I mean, there'd be a little variations, but they can hold that time on their calendar. And I think that would be easier for all of us to not be getting all the emails. It'd be a little easier to see on the calendar. We also talked about not doing that printout from Outlook as our agenda anymore and just using this agenda. So really, I don't think makes sense to continue in that way.
After choosing this, you make your decision.
Correct, yeah. So instead of having it like it is now on the calendar, it would just say Board of Commissioners, 9 to 11:15. And that could be...
It just blocks off our schedule.
Right.
It's basically it. But we still get the itemized...
Right.
As to who's coming in.
Right.
I never look at mine, because it's never accurate, because it... Stuff gets moved and all of that, and I don't know. My Outlook calendar for the board on Thursdays is never accurate.
I think this will improve dramatically. I also think it's hard to look at it, because the appointments are so small and clustered. So it's, you know, they're bunched up. So I think... I think this will be an improvement, and if you guys are okay with it, Amy will get started with it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Does that work, Amy?
Yeah.
Hopefully, that's easier on you as well. Okay, so you want to go through the board of the board?
Yes, hold on just one second, because that beat, and I'm not sure. Hold on just one second, because that beat, and I'm not sure.
It's good for sure.
You know, I think it'd be easier to go through it on this, this, we've got the contact information, which is good, that's easier for me to look at.
But this is the one that's missing, we just gotta remember to add, almost along.
This one is missing it?
Yeah, it's this one, it's after the data processing, the big one has everything. Or I had a copy of the big one, shrunk.
This has everything, it just doesn't have that one thing, and then this has a couple typos. Are you good, Amy?
Yeah.
Okay. So. What changes need to be made based on the precedent change?
Nine one one Painting Commission.
Right.
Currently Vicky said.
So that's required, that that's the president?
Yeah.
Do you want to be the alternate, Vicky?
Sure. And the Board of Revisions is also.
Aren't we going in order?
Oh, I didn't think.
I got AMATs.
I don't think we need to discuss AMATs or.
Have you guys contacted your alternates? I know Amy.
I did.
I did.
Yes, I did too.
Michael had, so we're all good on there. I don't know about Andre Kessler, did anyone contact her, Amy?
I don't. We could check that, appointment may have been longer than a year, was what I was assuming, so we should just check that.
We need to highlight Andre. And then we have the AMATs, I think John Kovachik still, is he still, or will it now be Nick Koya, because he is the Township President? I'm gonna have to question that. Because John, I think, was the rep, because he was the president or the chair of the the Township Association.
Right.
I think it's now, should be Nick Koya. But I'm gonna have to check on that.
Where is Jim Greener, a town trustee?
He's not.
So that may not be. Related to association.
You know, he never was, I don't know what that's.
Oh, that's weird. Or if that's right. I don't even see him at the Township Associations all the time.
So Board of Revisions, that has to be the president?
Yeah.
So, Vicky, do you want to be the alternate?
Sure.
Same with the Health District?
Yes. There's no alternate for the Health District. It's just the president. It says NA, there's no alternate. Community Corrections Board, I'll stay on that one. I can be the representative if you want.
That's okay, I like being on that one, I'll stay the representative.
Yeah. Okay. And then I'll.
It'll be once or twice a year.
Twice a year. Yeah. Okay, and then we have. Brianna, we'd have to check with Brianna.
We may not, I think we we need to check is how long these appointments were, but we could do that.
I think they're only a year. But, okay.
CCO member, so.
We want to leave those to Michelle.
I'd like to stay CCO member, representative.
I'd like to stay as the alternate.
Please tell me I don't have to be.
Oh, you don't.
Data processing board.
No, I'll stay there.
On the Emergency Food and Shelter Board, I, we do have Cody as the alternate.
Ah.
Wondering if we should.
I'm gonna have to ask Brian, who his alternate would be. And you would be the contact now Kathleen, not Vicky.
EMA is fine the way it is. Family and Children's first. I'm fine with that one.
Mm-hmm.
Investment Advisory stays the same. Land Bank, same. LEPC. Same. NACO.
If anyone wants to do NACO, they can.
I do not.
No, I'll stay on it, do you want to be the alternate, or you want Vicky to be it?
I'll stay the alternate, because I know Vicky does the NEFCO one.
NEFCO? You want to stay the alternate for NEFCO then?
Do you want that?
Yeah, you know what, I I've never done that, so yeah.
I'll do that one.
Yeah, Vicky's good about that. Okay, and I'll stay as the Ohio Public Works District Representative in it.
That's fine.
And Vicky, Portage Development Board.
I'd like to stay on that.
Okay, I'll stay as the alternate then. And then we got the Board of Commissioners.
We're gonna check on Audrey, see what's.
Yeah, she's got two things.
Uh-oh, Vicky. Time for my service on Records Commission?
Yeah, yep. Regional Planning, we're all three on there.
I continue, do you guys remember when we discussed going down to three of us, or going down to one of us and one as an alternate? I I think we should.
Did they change their bylaws, though?
They have to change it.
They haven't, and I talked to Ty about it again, and he said he wants us to do some type of journal entry or resolution, which I'm happy to.
Oh, they don't have to do that?
Well, they want us to do that before they.
Oh, before.
Do their bylaw.
Is there any reason why, because I I question if if, why would we do that? That's why I'm asking, what's your concern there?
I think that we do not need all three of us there, there's not, of all the local governments represented. It's not the entire council or multiple people from political entity, it's just one, and like the other boards where it's just one of us. I just think it's, it's it's awkward too to have the three commissioners there when they're talking about things before the commissioners. Think it makes sense for it to be one, I think it should continue to be you, especially since you're on the executive committee. I'd be happy to be the alternate, but I just think it's unnecessary to have all three of us attending one board meeting.
And did I hear that you were asking the same thing of the Development Board? Was that?
No.
Because what about the Land Bank, because there's two of you that actually sit and attend those meetings.
That is statutory. It was created that way, the the Regional Planning Commission's not.
Yeah.
Created that way on your own.
Well, I'm fine either way, I mean. Like I said, I'll have to be the one that does it, because I'm the executive board.
So, let's prepare something for an upcoming meeting, to get them what they need, so that I think then they will need to make a bylaw change, so it may take a couple months. More.
And then they'd have to agree to it, too. And then who are you gonna appoint, you want Vicky to do solid waste? I don't, I mean, it says as designated by the president. Do you want Vicky?
I can continue to do it unless you want to do it, Vicky, I think that needs.
Yeah, it's gonna need some attention, Mr..
Yeah, storm surge.
Yeah, Vicky, you're still wanting to do stormwater task?
Sure.
Do we need to pass something today at the organizational meeting, or can we wait until Thursday?
I think you can wait until Thursday if you're not ready today.
Thank you.
All right. Thinking I'll be done, I'll make a motion for sure.
I'll second, roll calling me.
Vicky.
Yes?
Catherine.
Yes.
Vicky, yes.
I'm gonna throw it out to that Family and Children's first, I'll come back later.
Do we have things assigned?
Yeah, just one, like we do, one thing, just like two hundred. Hey, Chris, do you have a minute?
I'll talk to you about it. I'm gonna throw it out, then I'll be back later.
Chris, thank you.
Vicky, take care.
You too, Chris.